Good evening, everyone. It's a little after, minute after seven, I guess. We'll call the meeting to order. We only have three members present this evening. Anybody here from Charlie? Is he expected? Is he on vacation?
No, his son is, his grandson's back in the hospital and having surgery tonight.
Oh. He's not coming. Hope all goes well. I would ask if anyone's recording this meeting, would they make it known other than you both? Thanks. There's copies of the agenda on the front table if anyone would like one. I've gone through the invoices that we have here. So the first item that I see is the Form F covenant for Kahoon Street, but I don't see it in my paperwork. We needed a couple of extra signatures on that. They weren't. We also have a couple of waterways licenses that were submitted. One is the Passage of Platform or Merchant's Way, which doesn't ask for anything, just gives us an opportunity to comment. Plus, it's mostly constructed at this point. Overconstructed. And the other is a float on... Looks like a dock and a float off of Pine Tree Drive. Which, I don't know if this is the same. But we have an A and R plan for Pine Tree Drive care of GAF Engineering. Do you folks have copies of the plan?
No.
Okay.
Is that 26 Pine Tree? 24 and 26?
Yes. Okay, for the record, I'm Brian Grady with GAF Engineering. This plan you have before you tonight, we're not creating any lots. We're reconfiguring two lots. Lot 42, the lot to the south, has an existing dwelling on it. That's owned by George Berajek. And the lot to the north, Lot 86, is or was owned by the brother Harry Berajek. Which 86 is, was a vacant lot. 42 has a home on it. And historically, 42, or the house on Lot 42, has used what you see as an existing building, existing shed, which we have shown as being on Lot 87. I understand, I think that's an old ice house or something like that. It goes back 75, 100 years or so, or something like that. So the house and that structure have kind of gone together ever since the house was built. So all we're looking to accomplish in this plan is to actually convey that shed with the house property because it's on the brother's land. So the brother has sold that lot and it's currently being built on. So what this does is it formally conveys the shed with the house property as the property, as those two structures have historically been used. So we're not creating any lots, just creating a parcel to be conveyed to the adjacent piece. So is that being shown as Lot 87? That's Lot 87, correct. This is land court, so the lot numbers are getting a little confusing sometimes. But that is Lot 87. That's the parcel which will be combined with Lot 42. Well, shouldn't it be labeled parcel? Not when it's in court. Yeah, in court you have to call it a lot.
It is for sure.
And the easement that's listed? There's two easements, kind of wings off the side of that parcel. All that's for is, again, that'll benefit Lot 42 just to provide some additional access if you wanted to get around that shed with a vehicle or something to bring supplies in. We couldn't actually convey the land because of lot size limitations. So it'll just be an easement for the benefit of Lot 42. Any questions?
Can you just touch on in Lot 86, the water pipe easement? Is that now defunct?
That must be defunct. That's shown on the original land court plans going way back.
But you don't see anything there. There's no, there's no water pipe there that is servicing any other property or anything?
Nothing should be servicing anything. The pipe's probably still there, but it's been long since abandoned, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you gonna try and get rid of that easement? There's been no discussion about that at this point. It's put in for a water main. The water main's no longer in service, so... Wouldn't want them to come back next year and try to put a water main through the guy's house. I hear you, yeah. We've had no discussion about that. But that's, actually, the lawyers will be writing up easement descriptions. Maybe it's something that could be addressed at that time, abandoning that water easement, sure. Any other questions on that again?
For the small lots, 2,000 square feet.
I'm just not sure of the setbacks. Can you...
Yes, sir. I'm looking. I see 11 feet, 11 feet.
What are the, what are the requirements?
It's 10 foot for an accessory use.
In that zoning?
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. Thank you.
Depending how you define the rear, yeah. We're showing 36.
Where are the garage doors on that structure? Or are there garage doors?
They changed them. They were on the north side, or the door was on the north side, but since that's not accessible, they're now on the south side. I don't know if it's a pass door. It's facing the house now.
Mr. Berajek's house.
Yeah. I don't know if it's a pass door.
Okay.
Or if they put in an oversized door. I don't, I don't know what they did.
So you're saying the 36 is the rear?
Yes.
So if that's the rear, then the front should be...
Well, or is it all, yeah, side? And then the rear being on Butler's Cove, yeah. Actions? Those little jumper ones. Go ahead, Mr. Baptiste.
I'm going to take a motion to endorse. Plan for George Burj- Burjek?
Burjek, yes. Emotions or a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Go.
I abstained.
You need... What do you need?
Do you want to pen to sign the bylaw?
Uh, yeah. Just looking in the box. I couldn't find it. What would you like to sign?
Just a minute. Either way.
Alan, you want to sign?
Just a question. Does this fall into the zoning bylaw that got changed by Mr. Fenton?
For the small lots, 10,000 square feet are small. That would be 200, I think. Set it for us. A little setback, just 5 feet in the back.
Yeah, but that's gonna be six months before that comes back from the change, John.
30 days. It's not a charter change, right?
Thank you. That keeps trying to change the charter over there, doesn't it? I see you had something else on the agenda also. That's it for me. Thought I'd get you while you were up front. If you need something else. I don't seem to have the three platform. Is that... Isn't that the lot number? I'm looking at it. Well, this is one of the infamous R43 lots, huh? R43.
It's that five. I see one. I see one. I see 42.
It's a lot. What do you get? Two? Or does it now? That's a town clerk. Nope, they all say town clerk.
See you, Brian.
Thank you. Next up is an A and R plan for 26 West Boulevard care of J.C. Engineering.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brian Bertola with J.C. Engineering. This property is located at 36 West Boulevard. There currently exists three separate dwellings, all built in 1940. I had submitted a copy of the assessor's info that specifies, you know, the year built. The existing lot is roughly a little over 4,500 square feet. And the way it's configured, we were able to get two lots on one parcel and the third lot on a separate parcel. We tried our best to equalize each lot. We roughly centered or equalized the frontage and kind of followed the features that are on the site, as is driveways and brick walkways. Existing lot, lots are owned by Virginia Elmay trustee. There are lots 604B and 605. 604B is actually a parcel she obtained from Lot 604A. It was a 5-foot strip. And the new lot numbers are shown, 605A and 605B. We are in the onset Village Residential Zoning District. And none of the structures currently meet any setback requirements, except possibly the front, which is an average of all the neighboring setbacks.
I tried to take a look at that going by, but I see now I was looking at the wrong... I was looking at the corner of Fifth. I know we've approved these in the past, but I know we also had one where we were making it more non-conforming. Did we end up... Acting on that one?
It's like 10 years ago.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there was a porch. There was a, there was a porch issue with that one a couple of years ago. Right. I think we didn't approve that, Mr. Chairman.
Looks as though it's been... Everything I could see looking at the assessor's cards was, it's been in one, it's been one lot or one piece of property for, since 1940, anyway. See, assessor's cards. I've got a way to see that. Much pleasure. Not having any.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
This has nothing to do with this particular... If a property's already non-conforming, why would the planning board wish to vote on separating that parcel into multiple parcels if it's already non-conforming?
Because they have a, they have a right if they existed on the property prior to zoning, which I think is in 1951, that they could later separate the structures.
And all those structures were built prior to 1951?
According to the assessor's card, they're all listed in 1940, which I think is consistent with the neighborhood. The way they've divided it up, they'll still have their own driveways. Yeah. Which is a novelty in that area.
That... They're all sharing that one paved driveway, correct?
The one on the other side.
Oh. And so which one services?
There's a driveway to the...
The one between the two homes services the rear home?
Services the...
One to the right.
One to the right of it.
Or it will. It doesn't look like it does currently because you have a walkway from the back.
Oh, it is... Yeah, there's, the far, the rare lot, rare dwelling will probably be serviced by...
The middle driveway.
The driveway that's to the far north. The one that's to the left of the main house in front. There's a driveway between the two existing structures and one to the north of the larger structure.
I'm confused now because looking at this print here, the brick walk goes to the center driveway, the one between the two dwellings.
And the...
It's exist, it's an existing walkway, so it's... Try to...
But the driveway that you're saying is gonna be shared is only 7' 9 inches wide. So the vehicles are gonna park behind each other for separate residences?
It's gonna be on the same lot, so the same, same ownership. Toward is now existing.
That lot, the... 16 by 27. What a country. Much pleasure.
So this is a situation that the board just required to approve this? I mean, I, I'm not seeing the merit in it for the town.
I know we have done this and others we've, we've, for one reason or another, referred it to the Board of Appeals, but I think it is within our purview to do this. And it's within their right because of the statute. At least these are all three dwellings that have seen in the past where one was a chicken coop and it was divided up.
I think we had one, Mike, that had a common driveway and it was five cottages in the back. And like I said, prior to 1951. There's not much you can do. Just hope for the best and if it gets along. Any to take a motion to endorse?
I would. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye, proposed.
Thank you.
Just a couple. Next is a discussion, Canning Realty Progressive Glowers.
Frank Canning, how are you?
Good.
Good.
What's the price of fertilizer this week?
Going up. That's not too bad. It's a little bit over laughing, but not bad.
Yes, sir.
I wanted, I met with Charlie because I had a couple of things I wanted to do. I wanted to move the location of the well on the property so it wouldn't interfere with any future things I want to do on the southern edge. And then I also didn't have drains in the back two warehouses with a solid tank. I had to add those for the plumbing inspector. So we needed to add those in. I met with Charlie and he said, "Well, just get the plans done and come up to the next, get on the next meeting so you guys can see it." He said, "I don't, there's no problems with any of it, but we just need to get it on record of what you want to do."
So that, next meeting meaning tonight?
Meaning tonight, yes. So this started probably three or four weeks ago, so... I can bring this up and show you what...
That would be good.
The original well, it's here now. It was over in here. And in case I wanted to do something there later on, I wanted to move it over to here. It's outside of the 150-foot well pump buffer behind me, so there's no issues there. And then I ran the water line down under the drainage swale so that way it'll never interfere with anything, any future things I want to do down here. And then this is the catch basin, catch basin system for all the downspouts in the buildings. We just slid that out a bit to put a tank here, a solid tank. And then I put some floor drains in here at the doors. This design, the plumbing inspector told me, the design doesn't, as long as you have the two doors, he doesn't really care what we do on the floor. And he said, "Whatever you do is fine. I really don't have jurisdiction over that." He said, "It's just these two at the doors because I can drive trucks in and out." So he wanted to see those. The layout's in here. I wanted to put some floor drains in here for future use because before I pour the cement, there was... use because before I pour the cement, there was never a better, if I don't do it now, I don't know what, I just wanted to get some floor drains in there in case I ever needed them. And they all go into a, a s, um, solid catch tank here with a high, um, high level alarm in the building. So those were the two things I, I wanted to tweak. Well, I wanted to move the well, but this one I had to change because I, um, they needed the, the drainage grates in at the trench drains and at the doors.
So basically, these are just considered as a minor modification?
Right.
We, we don't need a motion to proceed with this new judge. We just accept it as this for...
Should we request something from Charlie in writing? Just, just that he reviewed it and has approved it?
Let me see, did he follow that up?
I didn't see anything in here.
You don't?
I, I mean, I could've missed it, but I didn't, I didn't see anything from Charlie.
Oh, you find any block trails out there?
Yeah. Did the, um, Board of Health approve the wall change? Don't they have jurisdiction?
Yeah, they, they had their problems with it because there was no, it's, it actually moves it further away from the septic system and there's no, it's outside of the, um, the wetland buffer, so there's no, there was no issues at all with anybody on it. Because I went and met with everybody before we started this, and Charlie was the last one. And he said, no problem. He said, I'll see about it, you know, just, just get him on paper so we can have it wrapped it up.
Yeah, and so do you have a copy of the plans to, uh...
This is the only one I sent in. I think it was seven copies, six to seven copies into the office, so you guys have...
Of those changes?
Of these changes. This is my last one.
What's the date on that plan?
Four twenty-five fourteen.
So, uh, I would just acknowledge in a minute that we both approve it as a minor modification, the plan dated four twenty-five.
I would like it subject to something from Charlie in writing though, and maybe something from the Board of Health in writing that they saw the change in the well and they approved it.
Yep. So pending those, as far as the gas straps in the doors, that's plumbing code.
That's right, our jurisdiction, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, he just, Charlie just wanted something on record that I, that I was moving things around a little bit to accommodate that, uh, because I, I, something I didn't realize when I did the first plan, unfortunately.
Yeah. Okay, uh, so a motion to approve it as a minor modification pending confirmation from the engineer.
Mr. Rowley and from Board of Health?
Hmm? Sir, second?
Second.
Thank you.
I'm all set.
All in favor?
Aye.
All set.
Thank you, gentlemen.
But you sure there's no box tunnels somewhere?
I'm positive, I looked twice. Thank you, gentlemen.
I heard he moved them to a cranberry bog.
Put them over a baseball field across the room.
Gee, they haven't even swept Walmart yet.
Look, is it bad weather?
Who knows? Uh... We... This is a letter from Charlie regarding the release of covenants at Rosebrook.
Yes.
Um, when I checked the other day, I don't, they approved a new number for the surety, but I don't know if that...
Nine thousand thirty-one dollars, I think he wrote. For the work not complete?
Yep.
Yeah.
I think it was nine thousand thirty-one dollars.
Yeah, there was, uh, the bond, the bounds, there was four missing and, uh...
Some minor...
And some other minor stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, nine thousand thirty-one.
Uh, and we can, when we bring them in on the other, we can catch up on that. And, you know, got copied the, uh, review comments for the SNH Realty twenty-eight and Toby?
Yeah.
You know, got copied those. And with that...
Where's the twenty-eight and Toby thing?
That's the SNH Realty.
I must have gone read that.
It's, it's, I know it's in there, because I know I seen it.
Excuse me a minute, I'll get things together. We've got a cooperating minus secretary, so everybody's picturing it. It's a clean, gray little box. Can I get you guys to jump on the handcuffs? So I have no idea whether they've been checked or not.
When we don't check or you check, I'll read?
I'll read.
Okay.
There more?
It's like a duplication of efforts?
Oh, these are the new ones? These are the old ones?
Yes.
Okay, these we checked before. So these are, these are the new ones. Okay. Ready?
With the same old list?
That's for the same list.
Do we need new ones or old ones? Are they missing?
I don't know, but...
I don't think we have for the acceptance, maybe. So I don't know.
I thought we checked some cards.
Because I didn't bring any with me to the acceptance here.
Okay. Ready?
Let's go.
All right. Uh, I'm gonna go by the green cards, huh?
Sure.
G and Cola Properties.
I don't know if you have the set that may have been given to the county.
G and Cola was the old, uh, ideal ship. Okay.
Yeah, otherwise we have two sets.
The Savage Cow LLC.
Savage. Yeah.
Cranwell, Massachusetts.
Yep.
Nancy McNeil. Lawrence Higgins. Guy Prestige Properties or Guy Prestige Properties?
Prestige, yep.
Garden Home Estates.
Yep.
Lily and Lynch.
Y- yep.
Guy Marino, trustee of the Sunrise Realty Trust.
Guy Marino, trustee of, uh, yep.
Sunrise. Diane Mizili Gray. Is she here? Cheryl Lindsay. And, and you have two of her, Cheryl Lindsay and Cheryl Lee Lindsay.
Okay, I got Cheryl Lee, Cheryl Lee.
Cheryl Lee. Two of them. Two for Cheryl Lee Lindsay. That's all I have. Uh, let me grab those others.
Okay, Marino. I got two from Marino here.
Yeah, uh, did he, did George take those?
Okay, both, some, both of them have the same address.
Did you take the other cards, George?
Yep.
Back?
I don't know.
Executive Office of Transportation for Cranwell, Mass.
Yep.
Bowler Engineering.
That's us. Bowler Engineering. Okay, we don't have them on here, but...
On the list.
You're, uh, you wouldn't be sending a mail in to yourself, would you?
Guy Prestige Properties. We already did that.
Yep.
Guy Marino, we already did him.
Guy Marino, there's four of them. Thing is, we all got the same address.
Fifteen Gunwood Lane.
Fifteen, 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 fifteen. Yep.
Diane Mizili Gray.
There you go.
We already did her. We already did the Savage Cow. We already did G and Cola Properties.
Yep.
Nancy McNeil, we did.
We did.
And I have one. I have Lily and Lynch.
Yep, we did here.
And we have two Cheryl Lindsays.
Yep.
And a Garden Home Estates.
Yep.
Let me see how many of the cards. This thirteen here about Bowler Engineering was the only one that was different. Are they all there?
Yep. Except for Bowler Engineering.
Good to go. With that, I would, if no one has any objections, I'll leave the reading of the legal ad and open the public hearing for a proposed Dollar General development at thirty-one thirty-seven, thirty-one thirty-nine Cranberry Highway. And with that, I will...
Uh, my name is Bob Gage. I'm with GBT Realty out of Nashville, Tennessee, and I am representing the developer for this project. Uh, I've got, uh, Luke here with me from Bowler Engineering. He is our civil engineer on the project, and he can speak to some specifics regarding this property if, if you have any questions. Uh, what we're proposing to do here is a ninety-one hundred square foot Dollar General on this property. Uh, there are a few issues regarding landscaping, interior landscape islands. I believe we're hitting your ordinance regarding the parking requirements. Uh, we have shifted landscaping around, so we're trying to accommodate, uh, the ordinance as much as possible, but we're having a little bit of difficulty regarding the location of those interior islands and subsequently asking for waivers in that regard. And I'll have Luke read out those waivers as soon as I get done here. Uh, I believe that we are, uh, we're zoned correctly here with the CS commercial strip. Uh, we are doing a plat consolidation with this, uh, this filing as well. Uh, we have gone through and submitted this to, uh, our, or met through DOT, correct?
Informally.
Informally, uh, submitted this plan to DOT to get their, uh, their initial reactions to the layouts of the curb cuts. Uh, we do have one curb cut, is what the initial plan was, is on the southeast side of the property on Cranberry Highway. We were asked to add an additional driveway or curb cut, uh, over toward the west side of the property from the fire marshal. Uh, we have done that, so we're showing two curb cuts, uh, one of them being twenty-four feet, which is the most westerly curb cut, and then the other one is a thirty-foot wide curb cut, which is the, on the east side of the property. That will be the primary in and out for the customers as we see it, uh, laid out in this configuration. Um, I believe that's probably about it at this point. I think we're hitting all of our setbacks. Uh, we do have residential property that abuts us to the west. Uh, in those scenarios, we are required by our retailer to put up a privacy fence in addition to any landscaping that is required. So we do plan to put a privacy fence six foot tall along the western property line, basically from the rear of the site up to within forty feet or so of the front, uh, which would be the northwest corner of the property. Um, I believe that's pretty much it. I'll let, uh, Luke go through the, uh, the waiver requests that we're looking for and add any more technical information that, that he has.
Good evening. Uh, Luke Di Stefano with Bowler Engineering, Southborough, Massachusetts. And what I'd like to do is just quickly elaborate on some of the major talking points of the design and the overall development as currently proposed. As Bob indicated, it's a ninety-one hundred square foot Dollar General facility. Uh, the site would be serviced by thirty-one parking spaces, two of which would be van-accessible handicap spaces located immediately in front of the main door, which is on the northern side or the side facing Cranberry Highway. We are required to have thirty-one parking spaces under the zoning, which equates to one space for three hundred square feet of gross floor area. So we meet the zoning requirement in that respect. As Bob also indicated, we meet zoning as far as use requirements are concerned, bulk requirements are concerned, but we do have a couple waiver requests, basically a handful of waiver requests, uh, under the zoning. Uh, the first falls under section seven sixty-three point four, which deals with landscape buffer zones of fifteen feet provided along the front street line. Although we meet the fifteen-foot requirement, what we do not have is a two-foot-high landscape berm. And that's intentional. We've done that because we want to have some landscape plantings along the front of that property. Uh, but to do so with a two-foot berm would infringe on the sightline requirements as implemented by Mass DOT, which typically requires that we maintain a sight window of three feet to seven feet clear. So you can see that we've taken great pains in coming up with a site plan that limits the amount of impervious cover on the property. And what we've tried to do is provide a nice landscape buffer on all four sides of the site, and we feel that the addition of the vegetated landscape plantings outweighs the requirement of having that two-foot berm. So we feel that we are valid in our request for a waiver from that requirement. Uh, under section nine thirty-four, surfacing and curbing, it indicates that curbing shall be placed at all, the edges of all surfaced area except driveways in order to protect the landscaped areas and prevent parking of vehicles within the required setback. Dollar General typically tries to limit the amount of curbing on the property, which we've done here, but in areas of the property, primarily on the eastern west sides, where vehicles may have access to landscaped areas, the curbing is supplemented with curb stops. So we really haven't provided any area where vehicles could make their way into any landscaped area. So although we don't have curbing, again, we feel that we meet the intent of the bylaw by preventing or providing means to prevent vehicles from encroaching into setbacks or landscaped areas. Under section ten point six two point one, uh, there are a handful of landscape requirements that deal primarily with interior landscaping, uh, having landscape islands at the end of large rows of parking, having landscaping at the ends of certain sections, usually it's, uh, four rows of parking or more, and having planted islands, a minimum of nine feet wide between every ten to fifteen spaces. Here, we don't really have any interior parking. Uh, it's all perimeter parking designed specifically for the Dollar General. And the one area, which would be directly in front of the building, where we do have access or the ability to put in a landscaped island, initial conversations with the fire department revealed that they wouldn't be too keen on that because it limits the mobility and the accessibility of large wheelbase vehicles around the property. So we've requested a waiver from that requirement as well, which basically means, uh, we don't have one landscaped planting island. But you can see again from the plan provided, we feel that we've more than provided adequate landscaping on the property. Uh, then section ten point six two, or ten six two point three, parking areas containing twenty-five or more parking spaces shall be designed with landscape... twenty-five or more parking spaces shall be designed with landscaped islands to contain at least one tree per eight cars. Such trees shall be two inches in caliber or larger at the time of planting and surrounded by fifty square feet of unpaved soil per tree. Again, we requested a waiver. We don't feel that, again, that interior landscape requirement applies to this property, but what we've also done is we've planted fourteen trees on the site. So under your bylaw, we're required to have ten just because of the development being proposed, plus if that bylaw was associated with parking or landscaping associated with parking applied, we'd need four additional. So what we've done, again, we've met the spirit of the bylaw, but still requested a waiver kind of as a belt and suspenders approach, so that if a conservative interpretation of the bylaw was taken, we still feel we meet the requirement. And then the last one is basically that each tree shall have a shade circular area of fifteen feet with the trunk in center, using the standard, and twenty percent of the paved area must be shaded. Again, just because of the type of use we have and the way the parking is configured, we can't really place the trees on the interior of the landscaping as this bylaw is designed. We don't have interior landscaping, so we don't provide that twenty percent of shade area, which is the reason for the waiver request in that instance as well. Apart from that, we have designed a fairly comprehensive onsite stormwater management system. I'd be happy to go into the details of that if the board sees fit. We are revamping the site from top to bottom. It's currently vacant. It was the former White Pines Motel. This will be a brand-new development, new utilities. Everything on the property will be brand-new if we're lucky enough to get the approvals necessary. We did already receive Conservation Commission approval, and tonight hopefully is the last step in the board approval process from the town. And with that, more than happy to answer any questions the board or the audience may have.
You received Conservation Commission approval or a determination that wasn't required?
A determination that Conservation Commission involvement isn't formally required.
And you said the fire department requested two driveways?
Correct.
Did Mass DOT give you any inkling if they were okay with that?
No, as is typically the case, they're going to wait until we have all local approvals in hand before we can make a formal submission, but our initial inquiries did not come back with any, hey, don't do that.
Could you elaborate on what the fire department told you in reference to access around the building? I'm not quite sure I see access to the rear of the building by a fire truck.
They were not required, or we were not required, to provide access around four sides of the building. They did review the plan, and their only comment was to add the westerly curb cut, again, so that they had better access into and around the paved portions of the site, but there was no request for additional access around four sides.
Other questions? I'm looking for signage. Is there a signage on the south end of the driveway there?
Yeah, there's one freestanding sign proposed, basically in the northeast corner or adjacent to the easterly curb cut. And then there would be one building sign located over the front door.
Is there a standardized design for Dollar General stores?
Yes, sir. Sure. You're referring to the exterior, correct?
I think we do have that.
It's a black and white, excuse me.
It's on a separate document.
Could you touch on deliveries, scheduling, and what type of vehicles? I'm trying to vision the delivery area. It looks cramped to me, and I'm just wondering, do you have tractor trailers delivered to those facilities?
Yes, sir. There is, the main delivery is made at the beginning of the week, and it is made from one of Dollar General's own delivery trucks, which is a WB sixty-seven. It's a seventy-five-foot-long semi-tractor trailer. These are pretty, this is a pretty normal layout for a Dollar General. The aisles are widened out a little bit so we can get the truck on-site. What he'll do is he'll come on-site and nose across the front of the project and then back into that loading area, which is on the southwest side of the building, southeast side of the building.
So what he's unloading will be facing Cranberry Highway?
Correct.
So he won't be facing the building, I mean, the rear of the truck won't be facing the building?
The rear of the truck will be in that loading area. Can you see where it's the southeastern side of the building? There's a ramp there and then a set of double doors. That's where the rear of the truck will be sitting on that concrete pad.
I think he's saying it's going to sit this way.
Correct, it'll sit in the north-south direction.
When they unload the trucks, they do it via pallets and pallet jacks?
Yes, what they do is they make the orders on, at the end of the week, to the distribution centers. All of that material is loaded onto four-by-four racks, six feet tall, with wheels on them. They load them on the trucks, the back of the trucks have tunnel bits on them, so whenever they come up to the site, they're back into this area, drop those rolling carts to the ground and roll them inside, and then load up the empties from the prior week, and they leave. They're typically on-site for forty-five minutes to an hour and a half.
No other deliveries of tractor trailers?
Not from tractor trailers. There are the occasional Coke, milk, bread trucks, those sort of small, small-bob trucks. But what they'll do is they'll come in and do this across and back in here.
How was operation?
Eight AM till nine PM, six days a week, and nine to nine on Sunday.
Delivery schedules usually during the day, in the morning, middle of the night?
Typically, what they try to do is get to the site after the sun comes up, prior to it opening in the morning on Monday morning. That's the goal. Obviously, traffic, weather conditions sometimes slow them down, but they try to get theirs prior to the store opening on Mondays.
Could you touch on fencing? What type of fences are typical for Dollar General stores we're proposing for this project?
The normal fencing that we use is a six-foot-tall wood privacy fence, commercial grade, and this project, it looks like, I think, the only one that we have slated for this project is on the west side of the property.
Stockade.
Stockade fence is what we've got it called out on the, on the plan. It's basically a six-foot-tall wood privacy fence.
And there's fencing across the rear property line?
The fencing we plan to stretch along this property line?
And that fence is already existing?
No, not on the westerly edge.
And what is already existing privacy fence, which is vinyl, on the property next door?
Yeah, I believe there is actually a vinyl fence in the, it actually may be a wood fence, it's a little unclear. I think the survey calls it out as a wood fence. We wouldn't be obviously touching or taking down anything that isn't on their property.
Chairman, I think when the old dealership was closed, I think that the tenant maybe had us put up the vinyl fence and extended that behind abutting neighbors as a courtesy of privacy.
I don't know.
No, no.
I know they went, they fenced in the stock area and replaced the existing.
Didn't they go along?
They went across the others.
But on the property line, and I thought they went behind the neighborhood.
No, they did not.
I'm sure you did know better than I.
Yes, they did not.
I've got a photograph of that side. If you'd like to see it.
They didn't continue it past, they went right to the property line as I do with them, so I see it very good.
Looks, it's a wood fence, correct?
No, the wood fence is my fence. They did eight-foot vinyl fence.
So you're on the, you're on the west side?
I'm on the west side, yes. So they went up to the property line, but they didn't continue that.
Yeah, I see it, I see it there. It's in these photographs. So your chain link fence runs all the way up to the street?
Yes, well, within the back.
Pretty, pretty close. Thank you.
Has it been any kind of engineering peer review of the apartment area drainage that you're aware of?
I'm not aware of that. This was handled last meeting, I wasn't here for that part of it. Did you, was that directed to?
That did we even go that far?
We just set a public hearing date?
Set a date, it's off.
Yeah, I didn't see a report.
Go on, give it to me.
In that instance.
Did you get a report for it? For the selectmen? You didn't record?
I'll look through the file.
We have concerns about the landscaping.
Lighting being dangerous because?
I'll make sure.
Lighting?
Yes, sir. There is exterior lighting on the building and light standards in the parking lot. Everything has one-hundred percent cutoff shades on them, so everything's pointed down. And we will submit a photographs plan with the drone.
Well, your, our question, you're going to be open for a night.
Yes, sir.
Lighting is going to be, I'm sure it's going to be reduced by a substantial amount, I would say.
There'll be some nightlights on inside the store, and typically they'll leave the light over the loading door on, all night, and probably one of the light standards will remain on.
And one of the requests, an initial walkthrough of this, was a fence along the rear rock block line. I don't know if I'm losing it or what.
I don't believe that's shown on this plan.
No, I don't recall.
I know I had an initial conversation with, was it you?
Nathan?
Could be, then.
The idea is to completely screen that northern, southern property line?
It's kind of a security issue, and we've been trying to make that a continuous fence right now.
And that particular line is narrow through the rear or tracks to the, if there are residential debris breaking behind that property, but?
To the south. I don't believe there's any abutting us to the rear.
Not just the tracks.
Just the tracks. So you would request a six-foot wood privacy fence along that entire property line?
I think in other properties, we have a lot of chain link, just to discourage the passing through.
Understood. Still have hobos riding trains?
I think they have no names for it now.
So that property line looks to be four-hundred-and-sixty-one feet long?
But that's been a common request from abutists along that strip, is to try to discourage the passing through from Cranberry Highway.
Do you have a specific height requirement for a chain link?
Generally, they've been six feet, I think.
A six-foot, okay. Might be a little, probably cheaper than?
It's probably pretty close.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. If I could refrain from telling you what material it's going to be until after we get some pricing done on it. We'll put up a fence of some sort, either wood or the chain link.
Alan, was that relayed to us in the letter?
I'm sorry?
The selectmen's concerns, did they?
Should have come from the selectmen's office. We actually did like review of the head.
Do you know if those comments, I'm sorry, do you know if those comments were based on this plan or prior to seeing this plan? It was on this? And you still had concerns regarding the landscaping?
Somewhat, yeah. The lighting, the lighting wasn't good.
Yes, sir.
The ceiling sign will bill, will be, is the sign on the building?
Yes. There's a sign on the building, and there's also a pole sign out of the road.
Cool.
Yes, sir. Yes, and actually, the way that Dollar General handles that portion of it, they have a national account sign.
Why not by the road?
Handles all the signage. Basically, all we do is provide power to those locations, and they'll come in and permit all that. So that will be permitted under separate time. No, sir.
I mean, I, I thought that was a mark.
That's not really a mark. On these particular plantings, they're kind of, kind of block you out when they're too mature. Most people stagger and come back at an angle or something, so.
That's detention facility right there. We have to hop over to the other side of it.
Yeah.
I appreciate the concern for visibility, and we'll certainly do that if we're allowed.
And you don't have any detail on your street sign? Your freestanding sign?
I've got a picture of one from a previous project.
Basically eighteen feet tall, one foot five by sixteen, sign on it. Now, they do have two versions of standard signage that they use, one of them being the pole sign, which is their favorite. This is what they like to use the most, but they also have a standard monument sign, which is eight foot tall, and the materials used going on are the same as the front of the building. So we can go either route if there's one, if you prefer, or the other, if that one is not pretty. So we can go either route if there's one, if you prefer, or the other, if that one is not pretty. Yes.
That's all green space, correct?
Yes. Yes, and that's, we've got landscaping around it, actually. This is what we're here. So everything looks great. And just for your information, we are required to sprinkle irrigate all the plantings that we put in. So we'll irrigate everything on that lot that we plant, and we won't have to rely on the management to go out and water. These are true triple-net deals for us, meaning that the tenant is responsible for maintenance of the building, all the equipment, parking lot, landscaping, and all of their own insurance as well.
Another thing that we want to, sorry, about visibility to the location of that drive, it could adversely affect.
It could.
People's ability to see.
The sightline, it, it appears that we can get. A car that's stacked in there, it can nose up and get, there's a stop law that we put in place, so, I mean, they.
Could you move the sign back a little bit to give them a little more physical impact?
You, you're going to clean it toward the monuments, I'm sure?
Well, I'm not loving this. So if that's the other option, then that's a much better option than that, okay?
I believe the sign by law does encourage the lower lining of sign.
A lower sign?
But I would be concerned about safety for sure, that might be something that would need to be reviewed.
Slide it back a few feet so we can.
Just so that obviously we don't issue on visibility.
And you're only showing it five feet off the state layout?
Yes.
Which.
It's, it's five feet off this, the property line, it's about another ten feet from the actual travel width. So, you know, the sign itself is actually about fifteen feet back from the travel width. And as Bob indicated, if there are setback requirements, if variance relief is required, the sign vendor, when they come in, would be responsible for that.
But we'll pass on to them that your preference for a monument, so they can come in loaded with that instead of the pole sign.
Alan?
You should check with Mass DOT. The project widening the road, uh, is not going to hit that section right away. You're looking at twenty, twenty twenty most likely, the next piece, and they have widening the road as well, so.
You know.
Well, you may be okay right now, you may find out what they're not doing taking.
Okay.
So you may want to ask upfront ahead.
Sure, absolutely, we will. Do you know if it's, are they widening to a three lane or are they going four?
No, they, it's going to be, as it is, a four lane total, but it's going to be a raised barn middle. And there'll be a pickup bike lane and a sidewalk on both sides.
Got it.
So they're extending the road a little wider. There's been an issue in the road for quite a while, people creeped on to actually state highway or actual lane. Just because it seemed like it was okay.
Nobody told them they couldn't?
Now, it was just.
Yeah, right now the, the plan stopped showing on your property as far as.
Yeah, so now we've got two lanes each direction, plus it looks like the shoulder is six to eight feet probably?
Yeah.
Typically, we'll ask that question of Mass DOT when we're doing our initial due diligence as to whether or not there's any proposed plans, whether it be geometry modifications, widening, resurfacing, anything that could impact it. We were informed that there isn't anything, so I don't know. We'll, we'll certainly follow up, there's no harm in asking the question a second time.
The project has cut back, it wasn't all the way to the roof and the fire, so it is kind of.
Well, I think the funding has been reduced also, so maybe further up.
That's why it's going to be about twenty twenty.
We've been hearing about civil projects well as twenty years.
Yeah, yeah, that's normal DOT, isn't it?
In, in reference to the relief that you requested, the five or six items, could you touch on, you've asked that the barns not be included in the project or the curving. Could you touch on how you would finish the edging of the paved area? Would there be a cape guard burn before your blocks or is it just going to run level or?
It basically runs level, it helps with some of the drainage, but most of the, well, all of the drainage from the paved area is being collected, sent through the deep sun catch basins into the sediment for bay and then pre-treated. And if you had an opportunity to look at the drainage plan, there's significant reductions in peak runoff rates post-development. As far as the treatment between paving and landscaping, it's basically just pavement will end, landscaping picks up and transitions from there. But as I mentioned in the presentation, on the westerly sides and the easterly side, the wheel stops almost run continuously from north to south. So you're really, it, it provides the same type of protection as the curving would, but again, it's a little bit of a cost to measure as well.
It allows the runoff water to go through that area as well as being blocked by the curb.
So they're not budding.
Correct, there'll be gaps in between them.
Where is the nearest dollar store, newest, nearest? No, where, where is the nearest one to us here?
Dollar general.
Yeah. Will we could see maybe how you've done the landscaping?
No, of course I didn't print out, that's the only one you were looking for and I didn't print it out.
Yeah, well, I live in this area as a late event inline, uh, there haven't been, it's a light now, like.
Free stand.
New build roundups.
No.
As of yet, I know we just completed one in Walcott, Connecticut, we've got one under construction in Brookfield, one under construction in Case Field. Obviously, not close enough to where you folks want to take that drive, but again.
Alan has time, Michael, are you available? I do have some interior photographs of one that we recently completed, if you'd like to see those.
Sure.
You say you're going to provide a photo metrics.
It should be the very last page. I did see it.
Second to last, just before the survey.
These are, uh, this is, this is their new business model. They've widened the aisles, broken storage, changed the cash register configuration. They're really nice stores. They'll have six counters on board, one at the front. Dollar general, I see six stalls, I see five stalls, here's the dollar. It's not, it's not a true dollar store, it's actually closer to a general store, a variety store, it is a dollar store. Everything's name brand, it's not all the, you know, the China, the Taiwan dollar merchandise. They have lots and lots of merchandise, but their shelves aren't really deep, so the turnover from week to week is, is pretty large. But you can get everything from shoelaces to t-shirts to pantsuit, gown and belt.
Do you have one in Holbrook, Massachusetts?
Holbrook, yeah.
I'm not worried, there could be.
One of us, now, they, they're expanding, programing six hundred units a year. My company does a hundred of them, so there's quite a few other developers around there who do them as well. I don't know of any others in Mass that are really building ground up, ground up stores as well. Do you know if that was a new store?
I'm sorry?
Holbrook, is that a new store?
Yeah, I just don't know if it's your store, it's.
Or a family dollar.
Yeah, I don't know which it is.
Yes, yes. I don't know that Dollar General has any stores up here other than the ones we built.
They've got a few inlines that are popping up. Generally, I haven't seen any new builds on.
This wasn't a freestanding building, I just was in the town the other day.
And their, their new business model, they're trying to get away from those inline stores. They don't have enough control over the space itself. Landlord's raising rent or kicking them out because somebody will pay more rent, you know. These stores are dedicated to them, it's their store, they, we have fifteen-year initial leases with three, five-year options. So the idea is for them to be in this location for a while.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this project? Come forward and identify yourself, please.
Lawrence Weston Higgins, I own the property, I believe it's to the west, thirty-one, thirty-five Cranbury Highway. So I have some questions for the engineers and then I have some comments, concerns for the board. Uh, the questions for the engineers, now you said you're going to put up a six-foot private stockade fence, but you're only bringing it up to my existing stockade fence. If it's a requirement, why not go more towards the front? With that, another reason, I have the four-foot chain link fence, but just so you're aware, I have a bush line that is, with compliance with Mass DOT, I had an issue over a year ago, I had to cut it back. When that grows, you can't see past it, so if the mentality was to bring up the six-foot stockade fence to be in line with mine, but allow people to see out from Cranbury Highway, my bush line doesn't allow you to do that. And I am Mass DOT compliant, because I had to cut it back. Um, there was an issue with the postal service complaining about it, but they actually came out numerous times after I did cut it back halfway. So I'm not sure the mentality of, if it's required, I'm bringing it up to my existing six-foot stockade fence, which I replaced within two years. So that's my question is, if it's required, why doesn't it only go up to my existing stockade fence? Which means you're going to have anywhere from between a four to two feet, between our two fence lines with wasted space and you're still not going to have that privacy when, where mine ends, so that's my question.
And I think in, in Bible record, it's wrong, it's, it's a requirement, I believe, of Dollar General. I believe it was a requirement of municipal, so that was why. And typically, as mentioned, we do like to maintain a certain distance back from the regular way, for example, in that reason. Could be extended a few more feet towards Cranbury Highway circuit. Again, we want to be cognizant of two things, one, visibility into and out of the property for motorists and then providing visibility to the building as well. We already, as you mentioned, have a significant amount of landscaping both on your property and under the proposed condition. So we do, we try and limit the amount of restrictions from a sightline standpoint into and out of the property.
So my question or request would be, um, at, if, Dog General, because I keep on mixing up the name, uh, if they would extend a, at some point where that six foot ends, a four foot or something for privacy, because I'm not going to cut down my bush line because that's my only privacy I have from Cranbury Highway front. So as far as that visibility leaving, I've already trimmed it back twice for Mass DOT, I'm not going to take it down completely, so. My request would be if, if they would not mind to extend even from my six foot out to a four foot.
You're, you're asking for a, a four foot tall wood fence to be extended from where your stop's out to the edge of the.
Somewhere towards the edge, because I guess. Yeah, because, only because even if you were leaving it open so people could see, which would, if you were taking a left, my bushes go up and they're up about eight to ten feet, I trim them. Mass DOT comes out occasionally and I actually trim the front so people can walk by. But if you look left, depending how far out, where your actual exit way is, you, I don't know how far down you'll be able to see, because like I said, my, my bush line is going to be in front of my chain link fence.
Your bush line stops?
Right where it's allowed to stop, pretty much, somewhere up there.
You remember how far from the property?
I do not remember, but I know I'm, I'm Mass DOT compliant, because I came out inspected twice, uh, because the postmaster general actually issued a complaint. So that was.
You've got no issue with that, uh, I didn't realize that you had just rebuilt your fence. I was hoping maybe it was needed rebuilt, so you could just tear it down, put up a new one for you.
I wish, but actually I did it with, uh, all the posts are actually six by eights. I, I redid it recently, within the last two years. I had, it's lasted all the winter storms, the last two years, ice storm, hurricane, which we had a lot of damage in the area for the town, so it, it shouldn't be blown down, um.
Well, you're good with your fence.
And I would write something if the town needs, I'm not, I mean, I, I didn't see the need for two stockade fences abutting each other. I mean, I'm fine.
If you're good with your fence, then we can pick up where your stops and put a four foot tall from there out to as far as DOT.
I would have no problem with that, as far as.
That would take the board being able to shoot that in.
Would that prompt you to trim your bushes back a little bit further?
I can't go much more further without taking them down. I, I cut them in half for Mass DOT, to be honest. I mean, I trim them, it keeps not a giant puffer, but.
Would, would new bushes on this, on their side of the fence satisfy your need for bushes and privacy? So that you can take those.
I mean, my bushes are for the front, it's not really for the side.
Oh, the, the front.
They're, yeah, my bushes. My chain link fence goes down to about the property line, it's, it's off however far it had to be. And then the chain link fence goes up this far and then the bush line starts.
So your, your bushes actually are parallel to Cranbury?
Cranbury Highway, yeah, they don't, yes.
That's you right there, isn't it?
Yes, so my bushes are.
So that's them.
I usually look to see what cars are driving, and I want you to mistake.
It's, uh.
Where's your home?
Yeah, that's three years. That was my first question, the other question was, and you pretty much, uh, actually I have a couple more questions. You said that they would load north to south, or was it they would load south facing west? I was kind of confused about that.
The, you saw this, okay?
Yep.
This is the living area.
Okay.
So what they'll do is they'll come in, back up, drop all.
So north to south, then they, okay. Now, you said, you said there's a high turnover for products, so they come more up once a week. Um, then you said prior to opening.
That is the.
The only, the only concern I would have, and I know I've had to deal with it for other things, but, um, depending on what time they're coming in and loading and unloading, would be noise, um, based on the fact that they open at eight AM. I know Harris's doesn't get loads before seven thirty, so a concern online would be if there is a high turnover once or twice a week, early deliveries, um, just based on noise. I know for the town bylaws, last time I checked, um, there is no specifics on noise for the morning, it's whatever is reasonable. Because I had to deal with that during demolition of, um, the hotel and had to call a few times, so that would just be, that's my comment, my question was about the location and unloading, but I was more concerned with lights facing my property at six thirty in the morning, when it's my day off.
This is your house, I think.
Yes, yep.
Well, we can certainly put a restriction on the garage, depending on how the board wants to rule with that. If you want to say they can't fill up before eight AM, we can, we can certainly do that.
Well, I think the other point brought up is we're going to have two fences with what, three feet in between them?
Well, with the information that you just recently built that fence, I think that we probably won't build a fence except for there's just this front piece that he was saying where his stop to pick it up and.
Yeah, because on that, with that fence, like I said, it replaced it within the last two, and incidentally, there's only one, um, section of fence that's broke, which was actually broken during the deconstruction of the hotel, but it didn't really mess it up that much, it's just a crack. One of the running boards on the bottom, but only I see it, no one else really sees it, it still does its job, and I treated it, so. Now, you said the lighting will have covers facing down, the only concern I had was for, I would just. What's for this? On the plan that I had is a color, it had a light here facing this way, so my only concern would be.
It's pole light.
Okay, which would be dependent upon this lighting and.
Yeah, they don't project out, they project down to the ground.
Which, yeah.
There's only three about.
Three, uh.
Two in the front, one on the left, so. I've been building, the yard lights.
Yard lights, okay.
Did you point to those?
There's one basically right here.
What is the, what is the monument in the parking lot, there's a, what is that?
That's a catch base. So there's, there's a yard light proposed here, a double fixture here, a double fixture here, and then there's another double fixture here. So there's no yard lights proposed, uh, the residential side of the property.
So per the photo metrics plan that we've submitted over at your property line, it looks like the brightest spot is going to be one minute. That's a six feet off the ground.
Okay, yep.
Everything is concentrated on, tried to concentrate it on the hard surfaces.
Those parking lot lights go on after the store closes, I assume?
Yes, all of, they, they'll leave, uh, probably one on, but the rest of them will go out and the signage will be turned off and then there'll be a couple nightlights inside the store that'll be left on. And then they'll, the light is over top of this door.
Yes. And then another question, and I think I know the answer, it's going to sound silly, but I'll let you know why. Is there going to be a mailbox or will they receive it through a drop, a drop door at the store?
Yeah, that's an interesting question.
The reason why I ask is because I, like I said, in the past, I've had issues with the, um, postal delivery going in and out. And I know they had issues, so that's the only reason why I'm asking.
That's a good question, I don't have answered that. I don't believe that, I've never seen us put a mailbox on any of them. I think they all deliver in the store through the manager.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Just sort of required.
Yeah.
It's usually a municipal requirement.
And then as far as for the engineers, um, and it's more of a preference, I would prefer more of a monument sign only because it's smaller and I don't have to deal with the lighting, but that's just a personal preference, so that would be my personal request, but I understand, you know, it's a business and they want to try to make money. I would prefer a monument.
Depending on what the board wants us to do, we'll, we'll notify them if they have to do that, if, uh, that's the direction we go.
And the only thing was more of a comments for the board. And it's not really you can do anything about it, but just a concern that I would have as far as parking. I know, I won't use any business names, but there are close businesses very near to this area that I could foresee a possible problem with them utilizing the parking lot at night. It happened when the hotel was there and even when they destructed it and when they put out stones. So, my only comment would be I, I hope that somehow the town can, if it becomes an issue, maybe speak to that one or two businesses. Because they do, one of the businesses closes 11 to 12 o'clock at night and the patrons will come out. And maybe they serve alcohol and sometimes they do come close to my property at late at night. So, that would just be more of a concern. I know the town at this moment won't be able to do anything, but it's a concern.
Sounds like a law.
Question. Here's a question. Because I know they already blocked Mizzelli's parking lot on occasion.
I can't believe that.
And I know he had, I mean, I've had to call him before because he had delivery scum and not be able to make the deliveries because of people blocking. But, so it's more just a general concern. And that's alls I had as far as how I would be affected. Thank you.
Uh, as far as your traffic plan, I, I think we'd want the exits marked right turn only as you leave.
We've tried to do that all along Cranberry Highway to stop the lane crossing as much as possible.
Um, our retailer will not let us do that. It's a deal killer. Can I do it with one and leave the other one as full access?
Uh, do you line up with, you know? I mean, you don't line up with the posted street. I don't know if you line up with anybody's driving.
Because I know if we, if I go back to Dollar General and tell them that they can only have a right in, right out here, they're gonna pull this project. They won't, they won't come. I would certainly be willing to, the expert drive that our department requested. We can make this a right in, right out. No any issue. If I can leave this one, there's a full access. Wouldn't have a problem with that.
Well, there's nothing in past plans along there. There's nothing physically preventing them from.
Turning left.
A left turn. It's just, there's no arrow encouraging.
I understand. Meaning, we shouldn't put an arrow on the drive? Is that what you're saying?
I mean, they're still gonna, they're still gonna do it. It's just we try, we try to.
Well, sure. And it's still having that arrow that does that. How about if I just put one straight out, one straight in? I like it. I can certainly do that.
Uh, comments, requests?
I have a thing to mention. I would like to see some type of peer review on parking in the drainage. Escaping, if possible.
Do you recall when the drawing was submitted?
Yeah, they were submitted a while ago.
The drawings haven't been here. Hopefully, we got the review started. I'm not sure whether we're in regards to that.
Yeah, there was no request for a peer review at the acceptance meeting. So, that would be a brand new request at this point.
Oh, you mean somebody outside of the town?
Correct. We don't have an engineer on staff.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay.
They, they utilize numbers and areas, review projects, confirm.
Regardless, you've got a detention basin on the.
Be on the east side?
Not. Not plus side. Do you, but you're taking the, the westerly side of the parking lot subsurface to that point?
Everything is at the ratio of it.
Yes.
Yeah, it all goes down to catch basin, catch basin, and then it's light over and then the rest of it's sheet drainage.
It's gonna sheet right off.
Yeah, the entire, it's got the site under existing conditions. Basically drains that way as well.
Anything with the westerly path, the property, I see it as being direct after the retention point to be hydro seeded or lined. Is that gonna be maintaining this winged base though? And now to rally or is it gonna be cut from time to time?
It's, uh, they're, they're required to cut it per, per the lease that they have with us. So, if it gets to the point to where they're not doing it and we get complaints, we'll start penalizing them with rent. And if we can't get them to do it, then we'll come up here and do it.
And that entire left side will be irrigated? Is that what I heard?
Uh, everywhere where we're planting sod, so basically up around the building, the parking lot, and just to the west of the detention facility. Everything on the east side of the detention facility will be hydro seeded, but it won't be irrigated. Hopefully, it'll get the benefit of the runout from the detention pond to keep it green and grown.
But this time you're gonna be using. And it's almost behind, it's further than I thought. I can check with Charlie and see if he's reviewed this at all. I don't know if that's been done.
Could we request, request that you give us in writing your own requests or concessions or, you, you read them. I, I don't.
We do have, we do have the waiver.
Yeah, there's a waiver request list submitted with the application.
Thank you.
See, just follow. Have a review of that, anything we need, any more we need from the app. You had a rendition of the sign?
We do not.
No.
The monument sign. We would need something showing that, please.
We'll, we will get you all those. If I could make a request, if, if it's at all possible, if you are leaning toward approving. If there's any way that we could get this approved with conditions from the Charlie's review and everything's good. Uh, if he has issues with it, then obviously the approval wouldn't be until we got it in shape. But if you are leaning toward the approval tonight, that would, that would really work best for us if that is possible. Just a conditional based on his review.
The only problem with that would be if we run into something that would be, that would be major in nature and require us rehabilitating a public area that may possibly delay you further than you wanna be.
I don't foresee anything major coming up, but if that does happen and there is a major issue, I'll be more than happy to pay for all the notifications and everything to come back and get through this process again.
I'd like to review the waiver requests.
You'd like to review them? I hear you might.
Yeah, I'd like to. Yeah, I mean, of course, I have heard of those tonight, so I. That would be something I'd like to know about.
Yep, I can give you a copy of those.
Mike, please use your microphone a little better.
Sure.
Why am I getting so much feedback right? Must be the way these things are oriented. Just had the waiver requests. Turn the heat on us again, Charlie?
Feels like it.
It's getting warm.
I was thinking that too.
Let's cook it. I've just had several copies of your waiver requests and I.
Did it, did it touch on against the maintenance schedule, not in the grass, the bushes and things of that nature? Is it, once a year they come in and they trim and, or?
Yes, they, they'll, uh, sign up the local landscaper to come in and cut the grass, maintain it, and then trim the bushes as needed throughout the year. I would assume it would be twice a year, once in the fall, once in the spring.
I only control it because it's on the highway and.
Don't want them getting crazy all out.
Trying to get the beat up and.
Understood.
Is there anything specific that Mr. Lockman cited on their review? I'm not finding it.
No, it was just, it was certainly, you know, concern about the light that's trapped on the highway. It's gonna have these effects on the project and just the, the landscaping over there. We've got certain projects that will, you know, we've got landscapers that do that.
But on your waiver for landscaping, you're still gonna maintain that 15-foot landscaped area. It's just you don't want the two-foot elevation.
Correct. You wanna run through the, those waivers again? Read them off.
Is that the request of the board to run through the waivers again?
Uh, you can do it or?
We're reading them.
Oh, you've got them?
Yes.
Sorry.
The curb stops used there anchored in place, I take it?
Yes, sir. Charlie, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm curious to find the pack of lot where 20% of it shaded. I don't think I've seen that executed very well.
It's, uh, it's one of those new requirements.
It's a, it's a nice ideal, but.
Is your request for us to waive those cost driven or are they because of space and?
It's strictly the, the site itself.
You asked really for a waiver of everything in the parking lot, everything.
Well, I think.
Except for payment, so.
Well, I require, or I think our position is that this site does not have interior landscape. Just based on the design, unlike, you know, in the community that I've developed in traditionally, interior landscaping is geared more towards, you know, your large big box or shopping plaza locations where you have huge expanses of parking and you can break it up with landscape islands or rows of plantings. Here, we really don't have that. And where we have parking, except for the parking immediately adjacent to the building, we're providing landscaping around it in almost every instance. So, our waiver request is more towards a waiver from any interior landscape requirement. But as mentioned, what we've tried to do is take those requirements and bring it out into the perimeter landscaping. So, even though we don't have it on the interior, we meet the requirement, but around the perimeter.
Well, just to go through it quickly, and anyone have an issue with the elevation?
No.
No.
Curbing?
I don't believe so. Unless you, because I would like to see like a Cape Cod burn. Where in part of the parking lot, it's gonna be including anyways, you know, the asphalt just to control like the front islands. I'm not quite sure what's gonna control those, but it would be nice to have something that just holds back. And I see, I see that they put the curb stops on where the parking spaces are, but. I don't know. I don't know what the norm is either, so.
What are you, what are you saying? Control what? The water flow or?
Just worried about the, the landscaping spilling out to the parking lot, the rains.
I got you.
Wind.
It's basically a Cape Cod.
Yeah, it just flares up on the edge.
Yeah, just something to control it so that it, parking lot doesn't become a mess because it, that can be a maintenance issue for you folks.
I mean, that's traditionally where it's taken care of is their landscaper knows to come in, they'll edge it, they'll do what is required. So, you don't get that creep of the landscaping into the.
Yeah, you've got some definition between, you know, between the two elements, yeah.
I'm not quite sure, Mr. Chen, what the norm is for the town to request in that case. When they, if they're looking to waive curbing, do they request something?
Well, the, well, the thing is on this site here, I think, like Cape Cod burn would be, in the front would be great. But if we don't have curbing in it, it'll be a real bear winter time. You know, we do have snow removal or something that you don't worry about down south.
Yes, sir.
I agree.
I think it'll make it a lot safer because of the size of the project and wherever it is, I think it'll be to their benefit and to the town's safety also.
That was my other question. Have you thought about where you're pushing snow or removing snow?
It's typically taken off-site. Because on sites like this, you really don't have a ton of area. We do have some area on the western edge where we could stockpile some snow. And again, this is a fairly small site, but, you know, in instances where it's gonna encroach on parking spaces or interfere with deliveries, et cetera, it's taken right off-site. I mean, that's pretty standard practice.
You know, unless you can make a deal with a neighbor, maybe you can have a snow mound and you can rent skis in the winter.
And as far as burn, the, you know, the left side of the site relies on a lot of sheeting across, so you really can't separate that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you proposing stops along the highways I do?
Yes.
Wheel stops?
No.
Not wheel stop, stop signs or wheel stops?
Wheel stops.
Wheel stops are only proposed on the east and west sides.
Basically, the idea is just to try to keep cars from rolling off into the landscaping and then on the west side is to keep people from driving. Whenever you're backing out of those, those nose end spaces, keep them from backing into the grass there.
Yes, I know that you call through.
So, what's the? So what's the verdict on the curbing?
If the norm is that it's not on primary highway, if the norm is that it's not necessary and the landscaping will be maintained, I think that's fine?
As far as ten sixty-two, I don't think strip after every four rows of parking is... We don't have four rows per site, so that's... Planting islands, again, I don't think that would, I think that would hinder the site.
And it was mostly red maples, is that what I saw when you, from the trees? Any issues with any of the waivers? I don't see any. I think you tend to agree with you that doesn't really pertain to that site. So is there anyone else like to comment on this? If you're looking for more information... And a little bit of a bind as far as time because our next scheduled meeting is Memorial Day. Unless you'd like to lead in between. Right, next one, next week?
Whenever. I mean, I think there are some things that we would like some information on the sign and more details on the fencing. You have to do a little homework by what type of fencing you are going to install.
I think the cost is going to be pretty close to the same, so we'll probably just put the standard wood privacy fence across the back.
I think I would like to see if you, you know, the plans are you, Mr. Rowley, the landscaper, just for comments and suggestions in case there's anything we've missed. But as far as the requests, I don't see any problems with those for me.
And I don't see Mass Highway giving an issue in two cuts. It's still a lot more organized than what was there, so... Rowley?
Yes.
The word that's handed down to us is they want to limit them, but they don't seem to back that up, so I don't think there'll be an issue getting the second driveway.
Normally, whenever there's a...
I think the site will probably work better with it, especially when you're getting deliveries.
Yes, sir. And normally, whenever there's a request from the town, fire chief here for that additional drive DOT typically backs that up.
You will be doing granite curb on those, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And I didn't look at the detail for transition, are they just going to disappear into the ground?
Just the standard transitions.
Question? So you wish to continue to the nineteenth? We don't get Victoria Day after.
I'm not around on the nineteenth. I mean, I can figure, we can figure it out.
Is that...
So there's no way to get a conditional, submit the information regarding the monument? Basically, the other question was the fence. I'll put up the wood privacy fence across the back.
Fence, the sign.
The sign, I can get you a copy of that monument. And the sign actually is being, it'll be a difference of metal from what we're doing, but I can get you a copy of that monument.
The other issue we have is we need four votes.
Right. And this is an accurate rendering of what your town's waiting building?
That is, yes, sir. Materials and covers, yes, sir.
I mean, I can meet next week, not a problem, if we can get Mr. Rowley to engage.
Yeah, I'm afraid we're going to have to continue because we need to, we need to follow. So I have to...
Are your meetings typically Mondays? Every Monday?
I don't keep presenting. There's nothing here in the off-mondays, is there?
Is it seven o'clock as well?
So, uh...
Continue the motion, we can continue for a special meeting.
Yes.
The nineteenth, like seven o'clock for the purpose of the all the general. Just so I'm clear on everything that I want to get to you guys between now and then, we're looking at some information regarding the monument sign.
Yes, sir.
And, I'm sorry, what else was it? You were asking which way we're going to go with the fence, but I can tell you right now, we'll do wood.
And you've agreed in principle with the abbot to work with whatever he currently has and make it so that everybody's happy?
Yes, sir.
The loading doors, they're, they're, they're not a garage door, correct?
Correct, no, it's two swinging doors.
Right, so there's no issues with floor drains or plumbing department or anything like that for vehicles possibly getting in and out?
No. They're actually, they're raised up to the curb level, so they're six inches above the parking lot elevation, and there's a small ramp right in front of them there so they can wheel those carts in. Okay, so monument information.
I just throw this out there, is there any benefit to seeking to connect with the abbot in commercial site, connecting driveway or that type of certainty?
I don't think there's any benefit for us, and I know that if we do that, and we do do that in a lot of locations, but whenever we do that, we're required to put limitations or restrictions on that driveway as far as who can use it on that other lot. They obviously don't want one of the competitors using their driveway. If, you know, if they get the opportunity to move in next door to them, they will. Well, you guys are tough towns, huh? Yes, sir.
Well, I suppose that's better than a deep restriction. We're seeing all too many of, which that is in a way a deep restriction, but I don't know how you enforce that. How do you keep...
They carry guns down here, George.
People from using the driveway. It's Nashville, that's nice stuff.
The hours of moderation or similar to all the other states.
I think we ought to adjourn to Nashville for the...
Absolutely. Come on, Dad.
So, any motion was made, was there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have your contact information so Charlie can, our engineer can contact you directly.
Okay, so seven PM next Monday, bring or get some monument information to you prior to that meeting.
Might be prudent to get it to Charlie so that he can look at it to determine if he would think the location's appropriate or if that will definitely probably have to be moved.
You can't see through it, yes, sir. Like that pole.
Yes.
Yes, we can, we can, it looks like we've got room to move it back a few feet if we need to.
That'd be good.
Good.
I think that was always a problem on Kerneby Highway because Mass DOT has one setback for signs and the town had another. And some, you know, it's pick and choose which one you adhere to.
Whichever serves you best, right? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in a week.
Entertaining motion to adjourn?
That's non-debatable, isn't it?
Good evening, everyone.
And once again, we're faced with the same difficulty of three votes here this evening.
All we need is three.
Is it three of...
Yeah, all we need is three.
Is there no special permit?
No. Right, Richard, three, need three votes. So providing we would have three supportive members, we appear to be of sufficient numbers. I know that, Mike, that's why I'm not nervous at all.
Just to touch base on an earlier agenda item, the covenant release from Rosebrook, you were in the hall, did that...
Yes, it did.
...get set up and...
Yeah, we, we, we got that delivered and recorded and...
Okay, I just...
Charlie couldn't have been nicer to us in terms of...
I know that that part was done, but I didn't know if it, if anything was complete.
Yeah.
Because last time we checked, it was still laying.
Yeah. It worked just as planned.
Do we owe them anything? Do we owe the body anything?
No, I sent copies...
Small on my feels, yeah.
I, I sent copies of the recorded instruments to Charlie and I'm sure that he got them to you.
Very good.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, my name is Jim Kane. I apologize for not being able to attend the last meeting. Thank you to the board for dealing with that A and R at Maple Springs. We've been going around in different chunks trying to mop up what is owned by or what is owned and then what is financed through different agencies, financing entities, so that was very helpful, thank you. On this matter, I understand there were a couple of follow-up questions. We sent you a memorandum dated May sixth, which I believe answers the questions relative to the emergency access road for the fire department as well as how materials from this site might crisscross where they would Tyhonet Road and Farm to Market Road. We have a larger display that we can walk through with you as well should the planning board request an explanation of that. And otherwise, I think we have provided the information requested.
Give me absentee Secretary Dave and Kelly Manu and invest to keep up with things, but...
Do you need something from us that we might have?
We do have copies of the letter if you...
Do you have a handy? That would be helpful. I knew I would have it, sorry, David.
There it is.
I just flipped the page to it.
If you took material from this site, you'd come down this road actually. I'm just wondering why it stopped there. On the onsite soil units, consistent materials associated with historic landing strip?
Oh, sure, the landing strip, okay.
I know roughly where it is, but are you... Was there, oh, it goes right through it, okay. Accessibly drained?
Used to be.
Basically the same materials, you're just illustrating that it's already barren, is that it?
Yes, exactly. Yep. Dave Pichette went out and did a walk about natural heritage, has been out. The Mass Historic folks started this week or next week out there.
Think of an archaeological dig or...
Yes.
Find a wing or...
One never knows. Hopefully nothing they find.
You're out there when you're doing the power lines, George. You've worn a hole in the power line. They're out there.
Is that, provide you the information you're looking for, from the previous meeting or...
Yeah, I got to that yet. At least in the letter, I am.
I think most of the information, answering questions from the prior meeting is in the front part of that cover letter, and then the decision summarizes the remaining.
I think the beginning, the cover that I have, I've been concerned about the material. And then Alan, you're supposed to check into some of that on earth removal. A lot of material's been moved off-site in the last, you know, four or five years between construction and water holes and other things. And like I said, I see a lot of it going elsewhere besides, you know, your own personal bogs for agricultural use. You know, most towns have earth removal fees and everything else for maintenance in the road. And what you was talking, five hundred thousand yards?
This site?
Roughly.
Yeah.
And that site alone? And that site alone, it's a lot of material.
Yeah, and I outlined for you what we did last year bog sanding, what's going to be going up to what at this point is planned to go to the landfill provided that they continue their same rate for Phase 8, Stage 2. And our project for the Kava side bog. And we provided that map. I think it was your concern, Mike, as to where any crossings would occur.
Yeah.
This is not planned as a pit for other than what I've described in this letter. We burned through a ton of sand, I guess in quotes, last winter. We stopped winter sanding in early March this year. I'm told it's the latest. So one of the Chris Makepeace things is maintaining your 100-year sand supply. So what we've depleted around, we will want to get back out for the next round of sanding. And if you don't mind, I think you can hear me, I'll go to the board. We're redoing it. This has been permitted in the town of Plymouth. Kava side bog is all going to be re-permitted much like this. It'll be brought up. It's going to require a lot of material. And as we've indicated on this map, the material will flow down and go within the inner roads to provide to Kava side. And if we crossed over to the landfill, Phase 8, Stage 2, and if we were to cross over to replenish this, we would come across Tyhonet and Farm to Market and be more than happy to put in 50-foot aprons if that's what you guys like. We traditionally do something along those lines and have no problem doing that either.
Because, you know, a good example is the Shallow Furnace Project. I mean, that thing just finally got cleaned up from the last, well, finally last six months. It's real nice now.
Yes, it is.
And, you know, a lot of material when I leave before anything was done, I think I made comment last year, you know, the dust and everything else, you know, with the neighbors. And it's that fine dust, you know, it just primates everything. It's, makes it unbearable. We're reasonable people. I think we're all trying to work with each other.
Oh sure, yeah.
And, you know, we don't want to get, be forgotten.
No, and you know what, Mike, I don't, you know, the town will pursue whatever bylaws it wants to pursue and will adhere to them like we have. As I said, this, given the length of the road to this site, really not a practical location to try to run a pit out of. We have a deal right now with a gentleman in Plymouth. And we're drawing out of that pit for a variety of reasons. It's his, it's not ours. But it has a good sand. So we see this as a, a good next phase to replenish all that bog sand and the CMW. They're probably going to go through their full lease life of 2022. And as I said, one of Chris Makepeace's big thing is where's our 100-year sand supply? And part of what we will do from here is replenish what we've taken. Because as you observed, a ton of material came out of Shallow Furnace and a ton went on the bogs. And you're right, a lot went out of Shallow Furnace Road.
And we won't see that with this project.
No, you really won't. No, it's not a practical location. It's, as you know, from the road, from just looking at the plan. It's well in, it's at the end of Tyhonet Pond. You're crossing a bunch of bog roads, it's actually, excuse me, a bunch of culverts and so forth. Much better to supply the north and bog component and not even go on town roads. We do have that scenario that you mentioned in Kava, where they, you basically sign up for a number of pennies per yard. And it's audited and so forth. It's an adult game. And, you know, whatever George documents, we pay and off it goes. But in this case, I would argue we'll be crossing the town road. If we have debris, we'll sweep it like we do. We swept most of Farm to Market and Tyhonet several times this spring after a variety of those heavy rainstorms.
Too bad, I should have made a next drag strip up there.
I don't think permitting a drag strip would be a fun event.
You're talking to airport?
I don't think anybody would actually know you were doing it if you were out there doing it.
Oh, we did a dump road for a lot of years before Seaver Springs showed up. It's a lot of fun there, yeah.
We're going to just place some turkeys. Temporarily. So you don't sell any of the film?
From this site?
Yes.
We're not planning to sell anything, no. This is not a pit operation. This will be an internal operation.
What do they do with the...
I can't hear you, sorry.
What do they do with the film?
Phase 8, Phase, yeah, Phase 8. There was a... They took the toe that was like this and moved it out and now they're going up. So picture more of a, instead of just this thing like this, the north end will come up more quickly and then a frosting layer over the north end of it. And right now they're in the base of that, so it would be Stage 1 of Phase 8.
With sand?
Oh yeah, that's what you, you'll use the, well, you've got the overbird, don't forget, 50 acres of overbird. And then you've got your material that go in between and they line everything. Then they bring down their own Boston clay for certain elements of that. And that certainly stinks, you know, and that's being delivered.
Is there any future plans for that, the dump site when it's done?
Yeah, there's a, probably towards solar, Mike. But because of the concern with, when you encapsulate it, there is some, I'm going to call them comforters type, where you lay it over it, much like a tarp. And allegedly it collects it there. We don't want to get into a scenario of poking holes to adequately...
I was just going to say methane generators and all that.
Very little methane here. This is mostly ash. So there's very, very little methane. There's a couple of collectors and they burn off once in a while, but very little. So that would be the long-term, grass it over 242 feet and then see what you can roll across there. Yeah. We had those at Fort Devens. Because of the unexploded ordinance, you couldn't send guys out to mow it. Once in a while, a mountain goat would go, poof. But better a mountain goat than a guy.
What was that?
Mount, uh, Fort Devens.
I remember hunting back in the, back country, way back in the days when I lived in Marlboro. And we was out in the ordinance area. It was good hunting out there. And, you know, some guy was playing with something he shouldn't have. And it set off an explosion as we run for the bushes. I don't know where the jeeps came from, but I'll tell you they came out like, like bees.
Yep.
Yes.
So...
Are we square on what you guys wanted?
That's my question.
I think so.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, what, this, this project concerned me because of the movement of the earth and I'm not familiar with all that, so... But we don't have the luxury of an engineer on, on the board, so... That was my concern. I was reluctant just to move forward without having more information.
Sure.
I don't know. I, I assume that questions have been answered. I... I don't know what I don't know. That's my problem.
What, what do you think you might not know though? Because that's why we're here.
Well, I'm concerned about road activity. I'm concerned about safety, you know, just in general. I don't know how many trucks it takes to move that much earth and how many of the trucks will be on the road and, and...
Can I walk you through a few of those?
Yeah.
The... Well, they won't be on the road.
No.
Beyond, unless we were to come out here by the village, go down Tyhonet Road and then cut off and, and drop sand down in this area. Okay, there's not a lot of sand left here between the sanding and the rebuilding that you've seen. So that's the only time you're on the road. And what we do is if we have a spill or a period of time, we have a gentleman up the street who has an irrigation company. He sweeps, comes out and sweeps. We get a police officer, follows us with a cruiser.
Yeah.
And we clean up the road after ourselves. The other option would be to go across the high dike and just cut right across at the high point and then feed this area with any material. But the primary location that this material will go will be around Frogfoot and either up to the Kava side rebuild the material up there or right over, we have several crossings here, for the Calamarian, uh, Random Dump if you will, in landfill. And that's basically it. This area is a project unto itself, frankly, with the, kind of the relaxation price of cranberries. We're, we're focusing on rebuilding some of these. What is that project? This is a live bog project in the town of Plymouth. We permitted it in, through MIPA last year, I think it was. Went through ZBA in, in Plymouth. But this is a project unto itself. Don't see that taking off anytime soon. So this will be a rebuild. And again, much like a, almost a construction site at the end of a cul-de-sac, this will just go on and nobody will even see it. Anytime that you guys are interested in seeing a bog rebuild, give me a call. We'll take, give you a report. But, so, as you look at this material, this will all, I would argue 75% of it will stay on this side of the mighty one pinko road. And then what crosses, you know, we'll make this commitment in that letter. We'll clean it, we'll do whatever.
Well, I think the, other than that, the physical, we... precautions you take where you're crossing a pavement. That was a concern.
I think the, you know, the safety and the dust control.
Absolutely.
And not deteriorating the edge of the pavement.
Yeah, well, we'll do that if you want 50 feet. We can write that in tonight as a, as a add-on, George.
And we have, our plans have a construction detail that we reference in the letter as well that...
I forgot that.
Yeah, that was in the...
In the final, yeah.
Trying to see how recent that photo was.
Yeah.
I don't believe that's older than like 2009 at the oldest.
It's still that old to find, though.
Oh yeah, yeah.
Four turkeys, huh? Bastards are really weird.
Uh, anything further? You'll be looking to close the public hearing?
I think I'd make a motion to close the public hearing. Pending the information provided, and if you could give us some details on what you do, do for protecting the roadways that you cross.
It's already in that.
Okay.
The detail was provided.
Mr. Motion?
Sure.
Second?
Any further discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It does say special permit on your mind.
Oh, I think that's an error.
Yeah, that's an error.
Yeah. It's just site plan approval.
I saw a list of conditions.
Page, um, page 6 of the decision. I think this was filed.
Correct. Are these the same that we've been subject to in other solar locations?
Questions, additions, or...
I don't think so.
I'll just, um... I don't see reference to the actual plan, the plan date. Am I missing it?
What's your question, George?
There's only one set of plans for this. Do we need to reference the date on this?
There's one set with the supplemental emergency access plan.
Damn it, I can't, I didn't, I don't have the, I can't find the information on the details of the road protection and things of that nature. I'm not seeing that.
We'll grab it right now so you can see the detail.
Thank you. I know you said 75% of the material's going to stay pretty much on the property, but 25% of 500,000 people's yards is still a lot of yards, so I just still have concerns about...
So I think the commitment is in the, that letter that was submitted, so maybe a reference to the decision to be added in that letter and the again detail, if you're referencing that letter is on.
I just don't have it.
Have the need of road crossings.
Yes. Safety. Typical hours of that kind of activity or...
Oh, seven to three. I don't think we've, we had one complaint at the Tyhonet West site when a part-time guy was trying to be helpful and went in early on a Saturday. And we took care of that. I don't think it ever made it to you guys. But since that, we have not had any complaints from our own neighbors. Because when you sell them a house or you're perceived to have sold them a house, there's a higher standard there. And in the middle of nowhere such as this, we would stick to the same hours. But I don't think there's anybody to really hear you. We've gotten rid of most of the backup beeps and gone to that white noise sound because the beep can travel.
Oh yeah.
I think that there's something you can have instead of a backup horn?
Yeah, it's, it's called the white noise. It's instead of that annoying beep, 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 it's a, some other sound, the human ear still picks it up and yet it doesn't have that characteristic.
Not as air kidding.
They work on the highway at night now. They're backing up the trucks as they do the grinding. And I'll tell you, from about 8 o'clock till about 4 o'clock in the morning, it's all using tractors backing up the highway. And it just travels, George.
Well, I'd say it's required on so many vehicles now.
Yeah, exactly.
I dread having to back out of my driveway.
It's like the dripping faucet, you know.
Thank you.
Sure.
So this is a different plan than I had in front of me.
That's the newest plan?
No, when I came in, last meeting, when I came in late.
Right. Right.
Some days I had the Tihoona West site in front of me. I don't know how I ended up with that. What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
Close the public hearing.
Yeah.
We want now.
Would you like to take an action, or are we another on the cycling?
I would make a motion to accept the plans as submitted with the details relative to crossings and maintenance during their removal process. What else?
The acceptance of the plan waivers.
And the five waivers? Yes.
Plan dated March sixth, two thousand fourteen, and amended.
Um, it's actually just.
Supplemented.
Plan dated March sixth and then supplemented with a plan dated
That plan has.
With a supplemental plan, April seventh, two thousand fourteen.
That plan has all the details for the fire departments.
Yeah, right there.
I am.
So your motion was with the conditions listed in the decision?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
It's a little sad, it's probably our last large mounted, ground mounted, solar and wareham, so.
Yeah, they've changed their.
Changed their regs dramatically. Who knows what's going on, Alan, I don't. But this is probably the last one. If we can ever get going with building two and three at Hundred Rosebrook Way, we want to put them on top there. But in terms of large ground mounted, we don't have any brownfield sites, thank God, and now that gets the highest credit, so. Off we go from there.
What's your total wattage?
Well, let's see, six, six, six times three, eighteen. And then the cute little thing that powers a Hundred Rosebrook Way or some portion of it. So that'll be good.
The mix rate has changed and going to small.
Yeah. I don't know how it's your power priority and then you go small, but I'm not.
Just change the references from ground mounted to structural.
I guess so. Thank you, guys, greatly appreciate it.
Capitalize on the residential.
I don't know either, George. Thank you, guys, have a great night.
George, we're getting to, for the general, we're getting either croning or javeling. Listen to the minutes, these are going to call box, okay? Entertaining motion to adjourn?
Let me check the agenda. Other business?
Cut now.
Um, we will meet next Monday night at seven?
NSC posted, right?
Yeah. I'll, I'll give Kelly a call and.
Yes. Who's up, Brenda?
Other business, do you, let me know if you want to go ahead with any other projects to fall behind you.
Um, one thing that.
I think we have plenty more time, I think we have also some time in there from Slough inside.
One thing I mentioned was defining the neighborhood, neighborhood commercial district, which we put a placeholder in years ago but never, never generated a description. And the other thing would be take another crack at fixing the industrial zone along Cranberry Highway, which seems to be more of a, have more commercial general demand than industrial. That's probably the easiest thing to undertake since we did that description already, we should be able to revive that correct, I mean.
I can't imagine a town, these people want industrial anymore, to be honest with you.
I mean, unfortunately, it's funny because people don't think there's a demand there, but I think our industrial park is full.
What?
It's an incubator.
Well, obviously, that's where the stand is, so.
But it's small space, Mr. McCarthy's designed it in small spaces, there's no large industrial there, it's all small space stuff.
We, people come in and they move off and.
Yeah.
Yeah, a bit of Taunton, you know, those places.
They have.
Well, you do have the two tons that potentially took over the whole building and you did have a large building on the other side for a fiber spa, they built a big building and then they went out.
Yeah, sold it off.
Yeah, and, you know, if you look at Taunton, I was just there the other day, their industrial park is a disaster. Thirty percent of it's vacant, they've given the buildings away, given them away. And, and you know what happens then, you know, there aren't any quality tenants coming in, it's all.
Hidden run.
It's always the bottom feeders that are coming in, so it's always uses that are messy and crappy and just not what you'll want to see.
We had a landlord come in and say that to us one time, that was the service that he provided. Remember that?
Just a question, if you guys will be signing that tonight and sending it down to, to the town clerk tomorrow.
Man, talk about being pushy.
Got to get in there before those grants run out.
All right, just her land.
Um, the copy I have in front of me has holes punched in it. I don't know if we have a clean copy in here somewhere.
I have mine in the car, let me go get it.
Being nice.
No, but I, I can remember the Taunton Industrial Park going in there forty years ago and it was in tough shape.
Yes, I mean, they did a beautiful job.
Yeah, but twenty, twenty years ago, man, they were, they were like this, they were going straight up and all of a sudden it just.
It's just, it's just, you know, this is the quality of that.
But then if you go over the mile standards, that place is poor.
Yeah. Why though?
Different incentives?
I was going to say, it's, it's all incentive driven. I don't know what it is, I don't know what, I don't, I've never studied industrial parks, but there's got to be an incentive.
Me, me.
Well, there's a little easier access in a British park.
Yeah.
Than there is, say, one off of, one far.
It depends how it's marketed and incentives, you know, you get the Tweeter Center. The town, the town's trying to drive them out of there, basically.
Right.
They'd rather see industry come in and there's less internal problems with the policing and this and that and everything else.
They deal with the cop, let me every day.
Well, he only owns a little chunk over there.
He owns it all, he owns all the parking around the Tweeters, all of it, all of it.
I thought he just owned that little chunk.
All of it. Wow, he offered me a job, he wanted to park cars, he said to me.
It cost, um, south coast, south, southeast, you know, for the, for the swap meet.
Right.
Last year, just some details, thirty-five grand.
This will be the last year they've, they squeezed.
It's like, I think I'll get.
Can he owns all the parking around here too?
One of the big boxes, every time I go in and look at plants, people start asking me questions.
What are you doing in the absence of Brenda, she's out for a month, I guess?
Uh, yeah, Kelly and Dave have been trying to pick up the slack.
Picking up something. Lots of papers. Okay.
Thank you. It never gets better unless you fix it, you know?
Perhaps we'll, once we get past you, it'll feel a lot better.
Any good prospects?
Not somebody in town.
What, do you measure?
No.
I see over there cleaning up there.
I'm going to put on the market.
Forty B housing, that sounds good, Ryan says he got the connections.
Saw your bridge. And with that, I think I heard a motion to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn at, what is it, nine forty-one? Thank you, Bob. They just snoring on the other side of the.
Oh, he's there.
He's working now, he's exhausted.